This stuff providing a free copy of charts because we didn't have the internet. That's why I'm striking a lot of provide a copy stuff. Now, what?
Something else.
I did something, okay. I did funny, alright.
You can watch on camera there.
Okay, 4-4 is something that, you know, is interesting to me because this says the chief financial officer of the town complies with the responsibility of the mayor. That was the way it was written. And I'm not the chief financial officer of the town. The chief financial officer of the town is whoever the chief financial... We never have named the financial officer. Legally, I am a budget officer of the town. I am legally the investment officer because the city named me that. But if we have a finance director, like most cities do, the finance director is responsible for this. So, I did this to make it clear. Now, if you want to make me the financial officer, you have to do that separately. You have to make the mayor. But, this is to make it clear, in this ordinance, whoever the town's chief financial officer is, whoever that is, the ordinance says they're responsible for this. I act as that person, but if the mayor was like the previous mayor or couple mayors, in fact, they didn't know anything.
Yeah.
They couldn't have done this. They didn't know how to do it. So, that's what that is there. Other than that, so those are the changes in this. Remember, this is discussion only, we're not voting on this. So, that was 4.
So, now for the big section. Section 3 is all due.
Okay, so section 3. So, what section 3 does is that our financial advisors and Standard and Poor's and Moody's, the bond rating agencies, they want towns to have what's called a fund balance policy. They want towns to have this. And what this does, this has to deal with what's called fund accounting, which is government accounting. Government accounting is different than corporate accounting. And it's different in a way that makes a lot of sense, but most people don't get it. Because at first glance, you say, "That makes no sense." But the reality is, it makes a lot of sense. And the way that the government works is, we use what's called fund accounting. And what that does is, it says, simple. It just says, "The only thing you care about is what assets do you have that are current assets? You can turn them into cash right now. Your cash and your cash receiving. What do you got there?" And, the next thing is, "What do you gotta pay this year?" That's all we care about. Next year? That's next year. Your long-term debt, are you gonna pay it next year? No. Then, it's deleted. You have roads and you have a building. Well, you can't sell city hall to pay your bills. So, it deletes all the assets. Fund accounting doesn't care about anything that's a long-term asset or any debt. Doesn't care about any of that stuff.
But it cares about money coming in and money going out.
It cares about this year, what you're running in, what you're running out.
Kind of like a P and L kind of thing.
That's it. It's just this year. Because if you think about it, if you were going to go and plan your vacation, you might say, "Look, if we're trying to figure out how much to spend, well, you know, what's our mortgage payment gonna be that month?" That makes sense. But you wouldn't say, "How much do I owe on the house?" The fact that you owe $400,000 on the house is nice, but unless you're paying it next year, that number doesn't matter. You know, whether or not you're going to do something, you know, order supersized hamburger might depend upon whether your car payment is due tomorrow, but the fact that you owe $28,000 on the truck doesn't matter to that decision. Only that matters is the short term. So, that's called fund accounting. So, what the things the auditors measure for us, and they'll be in at the end of the month, is they look and say, "At the end of the year, how much do you have as liquid right now in your general fund? The super liquid, the cash, the cash receiving, what do you got?" Then they say, "What were your expenses last year to run the city?" And they divide it. What percentage is that? So, for us, that number's like 70%. When we were putting in the concrete roads, it was like 400%. And the auditor said, "You know, you've got a lot of money sitting here. You have four years worth of expenses in the bank. What are you doing?" And we were doing it to put in the concrete roads, which we then used to pay a lot of the road costs. So, what, so the agencies say, "You gotta at least have a plan." We want you to adopt a plan that says, "If you dip down below a certain percentage, you'll put it on autopilot and take actions." You know, you'll defer maintenance, you'll do things, and you have a plan. So, the auditors have told me, "Look, at some point, you need to have a plan. It's not essential." But the financial advisors have told me as well, "Look, S and P, you gotta do it anyway. Why don't you just knock it out when you get a chance? Put one in place." All they're gonna do is check the box. Yes, you've done this. They're probably not, they're gonna read it, but, you know. So, what I've done here is, I've said, so this is just from Gatsby 54, this is just the definitions, don't worry about it. The actual policy is that we're gonna keep 33% of our expenses in the bank. Most towns do 25%. We're gonna do 33. So, wait and think about that. That's equal to four months. And the reason why most towns do 25% is that's three months' worth. Because like right now, in October, financially, we're sucking. Because we have no tax money. So, October, November, and most of December, we get no inbound money. We're running on reserves for these three months. And then, all the money comes roaring in. So, that's why I had that rainy day for. I said 33 for us because we typically run a little higher and because the sales tax or other revenue streams are not big. So, we don't have the option, or we don't have another alternative for us, so, so I've said that we're gonna do at least 33. We're at 60-something right last year. We'll probably be 100 this year. Again, it's not close. If it goes below 25, what I say is that we'll adopt a plan, we'll either cut back on the parks, or we'll defer some town hall maintenance, or we'll do something.
Does the plan have to be different every year?
No, no. It just says that, all they're gonna do is look and say, "Oh, they've got a plan. Check the box." Whether we implement the plan ever, nobody cares. It's just, this checks the box that we have.
So, you have 33 up here, but really, it doesn't make a difference. We're not doing anything until 25.
Right, just, yeah, we have to have a lower bound. So, what some cities do, they say like, "If it gets below 20, we'll do these steps. We'll cut back on discretionary parking. If it gets below 15, we'll freeze pay. We'll freeze this, we'll, you know, they actually, you know, step it down." Basically, like, where these come into play was when we had the 2008, when the property thing cratered. Cities were stuck with what we did, you know, because we're eating into those reserves. They couldn't cut the expenses fast enough to make up for the property tax crater. So, a lot of them ended up going into this area. And, um, and actually, there's quite a few cities that cut back on their retirements. That's what other cities did. They didn't match their retirements. That was one of the things that cut, was TMRS, the retirement pay. And now, we're struggling, we're running out to go back and make it up. Okay? So, a lot of stuff in here, but basically, the idea is that if somebody asks, "This is our comprehensive controls. This covers what people are allowed to do, the action controls, it covers where we're allowed to put our money, the investment policy, it covers operations, what happens when our funds run low, how we're gonna do things, and it covers our transparency, our disclosures, what we're gonna make sure we disclose." So, it kinda covers the soup to nuts of our internal controls system. I think it's much easier than having four ordinances. So, anyway, so if you would, guys, I know you've seen it, let's talk about it again next month, and, uh, that's gonna be one next month as consideration.
So, they're just changing some of the wording for the first part that you talked about?
It was, yeah, I'll bring new wording again, and we'll talk that out, you know, um, you know, if, if somebody, does somebody wanna help me with wording?
I'll give you a hand with it.
Okay.
You have my shirt on, if you want, we'll finish.
Okay, then we'll, again, kinda like what we did with the 1, 2, 3 place, you know, running on, say, "I'll come back with some verbiage." It'll be close enough that we can modify it, I think, live.
I think we'll start by defining what a task is. I don't know how many.
I think we'll do that, and then...
Some example, including but not limited to type thing.
And, and the idea is not to get in here with laser beams and, you know, me, you know, throttle something.
No, you may do too restrictive, then the person who fails because it's too restrictive.
It's more of an expectation setting. We all agree, this is our expectation, and this is what we're gonna do, but, like, at the end of the day, nobody's gonna get, you know, whoops and chains out here and beat you to death. Uh, okay, does anybody have any questions at all? I went through a kind of, any questions kind of about, you see the lay of the land, how that is?
So, the 30, yeah, I have a question mark. The 33%, is that gonna be under the unassigned fund balance?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We typically don't have a lot of the other categories, because we don't get grants. Um, you know, we have some, the PEG money is restricted to certain things. You know, we don't get, you know, people donating funds to us to help them use for some, we really don't use many of the other categories, because we wanna keep our, we wanna be able to do anything we want. But, yeah, I, I think that's right. That, yeah, should just be the others. And if we wanna make it 50, I mean, we can make it anything we want, it's a whole policy. It's kinda, you know, what are we comfortable with as far as our cash reserves go? You know, cities don't want it to be too high because then the citizens push back and say, "You took our money, you're not spending it. Why are you just keeping our money in the bank?"
Yeah, you don't need it.
There's, there's a trade-off there as, you know, as to what you're using. Yeah, if you don't need it, then don't take it. And I agree with that. Okay. Alright, any questions? Alright, thank you, we'll discuss that again next time. Alright, next up, we have the zoning ordinance. So, what we'll do is, we'll kinda go through that. So, yeah, this, again, this is discussion only. So, what we wanna do, just to give you kind of the game plan, is when we decide to make changes, when we lock down and say, "We've got this ordinance the way we want it," then we have to have several public hearings, we have to mail it out to the city, and then we can bundle it. So, we can't even vote on this thing for several months. But these discussions are about hashing out the technical things we wanna change, administrative things. It's cleaning up a lot of technical details. It's hashing these out, because when we mail it out, we wanna basically that we're happy with it. And so, the only thing then that happens is, in a public hearing, if somebody raises a, something which has merit, we can change it. But the idea isn't to have the public hearings and then start working the ordinance. Because then we gotta mail it out again, and we gotta start over. So, you know, next month, we're gonna do this again, we're gonna implement the changes we talked to now. And then, you got another chance to read it again. It's 100 pages or 80 pages. Read it, and if you have any questions, we'll, you know, bring it. Right now, this is redlined by me and Clint. We've gone through it.
So, it's based off some of the research that Mark put here.
So, one of the things I wanted people to see was, we went back to 2015, and the idea is, what are the variances that were granted? Because if we're gonna basically grant the same variance over and over again, then we might as well just put it in the zoning ordinance, right? And what you can see is, the most prevalent one is the garage door setback, the one we had tonight. And that's why Clint, we've talked about, we made it 28, probably resetting it back to 25. And, and so, that's in the text, we'll get to that. The garage size, is that in here or is that in the building? I don't remember.
Um, I think it's in the table, I think it's part of zoning.
I think it's part of zoning. So, we'll talk about that.
That one, I'm kinda, I mean, when we've done those before, that's just been, I mean, itches.
Right, it been, that, you can see, it seemed like it was a lot more prevalent than I thought, but it turns out it's not.
It's the, it's the flat work in this.
Is that in them of garage stuff?
Yeah, exactly. How big your garage has to be.
I had it at least this much.
Right.
Those have been on these weird shaped lots where it's kinda like...
But most times, we've been able to tell the builder when they come in, like in the shores, it's custom-built. Don't make the damn thing six inches short. Just make the thing the right size. We send them back to the drawing board. Over here, there's been sometimes that trade-off between the side entry, like Brittany's gonna have to do, right? She can make the driveway or make the lot shorter to get more swing. Or make it the full size and get less, that's the trade-off. You can see, we're pinning those variances a lot.
So, all of these, all these variances except for two, if I'm reading this correctly, are in the village?
What do you mean?
Location.
Oh, you mean over here, yes.
Which you would think, because that's where the smaller lots are.
Exactly. And the only two basically in the shores are where we have the boat garages. You know, at the end of the property, they can't do it, they wanna do second garage, and they can't put it over the top of the pool. You know, so we let them put it way at the back, facing forward. So, it's what I call pool gar, uh, boat garages. But, yeah, that's a good point, is that, you know...
Well, you'd expect that.
Exactly what you'd expect.
Yeah.
Uh, and then there were, there were a handful of just oddball, I think that, did I not put that, is it, is it lower than that clip?
No, I said it.
There, okay. There were three weirdos. We shouldn't say weirdos. There were three oddballs that just were, you know, like, somebody was putting in a pool in the backyard, and there's a utility poles there, so they needed a, they needed an extra couple of feet. Or, um, there was a couple of, couple of simple ones.
And any rear yard's gonna be a pool related?
Yeah.
Or some sort of...
There aren't no rear setbacks in the shores. There are rear setbacks on some of the properties over here, yeah. But those, I don't think we need to worry about. They're, they're really not in play. They're just one-offs. Well, I thought this would be instructive, just to give everybody an idea of what we're... And these are the ones that were approved.
Approved.
These actually are the ones we actually said yes to, because that's the ones we wanna look at.
Right.
Okay, so, now, we're basically gonna kinda go through and look at, we're just gonna go to some of the track changes. And again, this is, you know, discussion only.
So, this, this is one that we put in originally, where basically, this was a result of a house in high ridge that had a lot of concrete in their front yard. So, we put it in, it's basically, you can't...
Covered orange, the driveway. Took up 98% of the front yard.
So, we, we put it in, and you can't cover more than 50%. After thinking about some more, there's a gap with a corner lot, you have two side yards or two front yards. So, basically, I added some wording to here, say, "Okay, not exceed 50% or 25% for corner lots."
You could totally concrete one side.
Yeah, you could, so a corner lot, you could, yeah, you could kind of exceed the spirit of what...
I think they have it a little bit...
You understand, right? A corner lot, both sides of the front.
Both sides of the street are considered front yard.
So, that, that, I think that's easy.
So, this one here, we'll go, we'll talk more about it. So, there's several, there's a couple of different areas to approach, to address, and approach the setback. This section is actually specifically for driveways. And this, this section came about again for partly the same house, kinda covering what you can and can't do for driveways. And then, so, added this section here for approach of the setback, but we're gonna refer it back to section four, where we'll actually have the, display of some of this operationally. It's like, well, where is that? You look here, oh, well, there's nothing in there. Nope, nothing in zoning. Well, no, hold on, you gotta...
So, we'll clean it up. There's still some, there's some duplication, different, you know, it's just structural, but we'll, we'll clean it up.
Here's an actual section.
Can you make that bigger, Clint?
Side yard setbacks.
Thank you. Okay. So, here's, so, one of the, one of the changes here, and this is something we should, we wanna talk about, Wes.
Yeah, so, the, were side yard setbacks.
So, in the side yard, one of the issues we had was, I'll call it the Harold Wood. Harold used to have these little sheds. They were aluminum. They were like five feet tall, these little sheds, right? Um, or like the tough sheds, they were, you buy them at Lowe's, what?
She sheds.
She sheds. So, they're these little zikular sheds. Well, the idea was that, you know, can you, people would just stick them against their fence, in their backyards, whatever. So, they're in the side setback. But it's a little portable.
It's not a permanent, correct?
It's not a permanent building, it's just a little shed. But we wouldn't want, like, my accessory building has foundation. So, what we're trying, we're trying to distinguish between what accessory buildings can you put inside the setback, and what can't you do. So, I added the word portable, to say you could put a portable one in there. Now, later on, we'll probably have to define portable in definitions.
Yeah.
To be like, less than 150 square feet and no electricity, or no foundation, or some...
Something that's assembled versus built, maybe, or something.
Deliver.
Yeah, 'cause, 'cause that's kind of, you know, somebody, I don't, I mean, 'cause I'm torn, like, Ed, Ed has a nice building, a workshop. Now, would it be a tragedy if that was up against the fence? I don't think it would be, it's only eight feet tall. But we typically haven't allowed those kind of buildings, because we just wanted to keep space.
Keep a little space, yeah.
This is one that's not been a major problem, but it's just, after we started looking at it more, it's like, there's a gap, you know, right? There's a, a point that somebody could argue.
Intuitively, to me, if you buy a tough shed, one of those plastic guys, and you stick it in your backyard, and it's just next to the fence, that's not making any noise, it's, it's not gonna cause, you know, that's just a different animal.
It'd be moved, a different problem.
Yeah.
Unless they pour, sometimes people will pour a concrete foundation and set those on there, and it's not, it doesn't make it any more permanent, but it's sort of a...
Yeah, so that's kind of where I think, you know, we just have to figure out how to define it better, that, my impression is, we're okay with little things like that in the setback. But big things, no.
Right. We might, we might all hang this description here.
So, but we can do that inside the portable.
In, in the side, the definition of portable.
Portable, yeah, okay.
So, I think the key type of way is, we gotta figure out how to define portable. In the spirit, I think it really sounds like we're not in their head, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, okay. Um, this was in the side setback, and side setbacks appear in different places, what Clint was saying. This deals with the driveway. So, Clint put the driveway stuff in driveways, I put the driveway stuff in setbacks. As I say, it's in different places, but what this says is, like that sheet that you guys have, if you're in the district that has seven foots for over here, what I wrote down, Clint and I had different numbers, what I wrote down is, you could go five feet of the seven, and basically, you have to stay two feet off the line. That's a placeholder.
I like 3.
Fair enough. I mean, that's a placeholder. And then, if you're in the 12-foot, so you're in the shores, then you gotta stay five feet off the line. So, we gotta, there'll be 10 feet between driveways. No two driveways do that 10 feet. Now, I am not locked and loaded on those two numbers, we can discuss any number you want, that's just any placeholder. But, um...
I like 3, because that's kinda what we've done before. We've helped a lot of people with 3.
So, um, I'm open for any discussion, I mean...
So, this is along the lines, just what we had tonight with Brittany. I mean, that just happens to be, that's one fresh, I mean, not to pick on her, but that's one that's coming back next month.
Yeah. We didn't, used to have this as, we, in the old days, the town did not worry about driveways in the setback. My driveway goes all the way to property ward. It arcs, and it tucks its tangent to it at one point. But over here, they put driveways in side by side. They merged them. And then, put in half the driveway and merged them.
That's actually...
That's what caused all of us to jump in.
That's what's really behind this, is this is saying no shared driveways.
Right, 'cause people started, we had some people trying to save money on the concrete and merging driveways.
And that, that works great until the neighbors move.
Yeah.
And this comes up, not, we're trying to be proactive and avoid this, but this'll come up in condos, right? Where you have shared driveways, somebody's too far over, your cigarette butts are on my side.
Yeah, it creates...
Six-foot buffer between the two, right?
So, so what...
Do you have shared driveway now?
Yeah.
Yeah, on Hillside, there is.
I think, I only know...
Oh, that's right.
And there's a drain in the middle a bit for, yeah.
Now, let me, what I should have practiced this with, this, this whole discussion, is, one of the things that Clint and I discussed in 2014 was, some of the things what we're going to do is, we're gonna put it in, and then we're gonna do exactly this. We're gonna see what happens, and then we're gonna go back and change it if we have to. But, you know, like, like, we said, "No driveways in the setback. Keep it out." That's the way we changed it.
Somebody went, yeah, when, in 2014, the previous, it went from a 1983-based zoning ordinance with a bunch of changes, and zoning was hard to change, it went into building code, which it wasn't legal there, and there's building code thing. And somewhere in the 90s, it kinda stopped revision. And 2014 is when we kinda threw that away and start over. So, we knew things like this were gonna come up that we...
So, what we did is, for certain decisions, we made the decision, so you know what, I don't know what, let's, look, let's say you can't put the driveway at all. They don't get rid of this problem, they won't rent the driveway. Knowing that, let's see what evolves, and then we'll come back later, and we can change to what, you know, what, what seems to be the consensus, what seems to be working. So, this is absolutely what we planned on doing, was coming back and seeing, "Wow, you know, that, that didn't work out like we thought, you know, maybe we need to loosen that up a little bit."
People, people will teach you how to interpret in between two, so this is where...
But, you know, we, we wanted the side swings to be bigger. People were putting them in too short. And, and so, we said, "Let's push the envelope, let's make them do 28." And then, these builders will stop cheapening these, these swings. And, um, and it worked, in the shores. But we didn't say, "But over here, it's a different number." We left it at one number for everybody. And in hindsight, maybe we should have made different numbers, but it's okay, we learned.
I think the other thing we learned is, not every, some of the house plans that people are on this side are not custom. And so, you're trying to fit this on this lot, and so, you're trying to work with the homeowners. It, it, that was something, it was a little...
And you had some odd-shaped lots over here, odd-shaped small lots.
As soon as there's a bend on the street, that'll lead about half the time, and it's what it's been, those warehouses are built, or through that one.
Now, the thing with Brittany, we're gonna get to, like, the 28 feet, 25 feet, whatever. See, this thing right here splits based on size, essentially, 'cause they're different setbacks and different things. Okay, so, one thing to think about, when I discuss it now, would be, one option, you could say, again, over there, 28 feet, it's custom-built house, so 150-foot wide lots, do 28. Over here, less than half acre, whatever.
Well, yeah, it should be different, the setbacks are different.
The setbacks are different, and...
And you have so much more room over there. I, I can't think of a legitimate request for somebody to say, "I wanna put my house all the way to this edge of the lot, and I wanna squeeze the setback for the driveway."
That's why you see, like Ed pointed out, there's almost no variances in the shores.
Usually, what, what we see on the shores is the houses, not, the rectangle shape of the house is sideways on the lot, not the length, so then it pushes and stretches out the setbacks.
But something to consider is...
There's this neighbor right across the street, right? He's got a lot of garage, and so, that's part of, his houses are wide rather than deep. And so he gets, he gets real close on the setbacks.
So traditionally, there's been one number.
But it is a custom house, and if you know that going in, you can design the house.
That's what we try to tell them to do, exactly, when they show up here.
So, but to your point, Mark, we could actually strike five altogether, and only have the exception on four. Right, I think that's where you were going.
We, we can do whatever we, you know, we can do, exactly. We can set the shores and the only issue with doing it, the reason why I did it at seven and twelve was I don't know what any new development's gonna come out. They'll probably put in a planned development anyway, and they'll have to run. So I think we'll be okay. All right, so let's move on. The handles, we kind of scroll.
No, I didn't write that. I'll put mine over it.
Well, then you gotta make the top. The top can't be five now.
That's true.
The line above, it's gotta be four.
I think we'd wanna err on the side of more.
I agree.
Than less.
I mean, they could, again, they still commit after.
Yeah, they ask for variance, right? If they have a lot of it, just.
This is just, yeah, this is giving them a little bit more win-ward.
Exactly.
So we can do fewer variances.
Exactly right, or they have a shot at avoiding variance. A little bit.
So this is going into the next thing, so garage is still setbacks, but garage door setback specifically.
So that's the one that we could make that two number. We could say twenty-eight feet in sections five and six.
So if this was twenty-five right now, we wouldn't have seen Brittany tonight.
Yeah.
She wouldn't be in a variance.
She's in twenty-six.
So the easiest thing to do is just do that, leave it at twenty-five across the board.
So Sam, this is a, this is a number we have to come up. We came up with twenty-eight before, it's too many. If we drop it to, full-size pickup, it's twenty feet. So five feet, that's still pretty tight. That's, that's Austin Powers saying.
Most cities, it's between twenty and twenty-five.
Yeah. And, but a lot of those cities have those little bitty postage stamp lots that they're looking to put volume in there.
Yeah, or they have rear entry, they have the alleys, so it doesn't really, you know. So right now, that's twenty-five feet across the board for everybody, which is, I, I live on that. That's, okay.
By the way, going back here, what's a portable building versus a, don't you think it should be, if it's assembled from pieces like what you buy from Home Depot?
Flat boxes.
Versus stick-built?
Yeah, I think.
Build is not really portable. You can't take it apart and move it and put it back together. I mean, you could.
I think size, I think we'll have like size, you know, we'll have like five, you know, we'll have descriptive that if it's these things.
Those portables that you buy at Home Depot, those are pretty big.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, some of them are really big.
Well, I have some examples to say.
Oh, you mean the ones that are stick-built that sit out in there? Because there's the ones you assemble, which I've had those before, they're big, hang in the ass, you assemble, nothing ever fits right. And then there's the one like, that sit out there that are, they look like the old Red Barn and all that, and they're actually stick-built.
That's, that's why I kind of made a white tractor deliver it. Right.
Yeah, but technically homes out, we deliver.
Yeah. All right, we'll take this down. Yeah, I think it's gonna have multiple.
Yeah.
Corridors on it.
And then Wolfrey does it.
Okay, this one, just the height exception was just, it was just a little bit of verbiage change, that's all, just cleaning up the and adding municipal structures for us. This was, this was our height limitations at two and a half stories. The issue with, with Lakewood Village is a lot of cities have height restrictions, right? Thirty feet, forty, whatever. You can't. We have a roof pitch. So if the house is wide, the house is as tall as it has to be, roof's gotta connect. So if you set the pitch, you know what I mean? It is what it is. So we have two and a half stories, it's kind of our standard maximum height, which is, so everybody knows, two and a half stories means from the front, you're looking at it, it looks like two. But inside the roof line, behind the house typically, there's a third story, looking at the lake or whatever, but you can't see it from the front. That's what is referred to as a two and a half story house.
How many feet is two and a half story?
It depends. But see, the problem is, if your house is this big, and you have a roof pitch on it, it's gonna be that tall. If your house is this big, and you have the same roof pitch on it, it's gonna be this tall. That's why we can't say it's thirty feet. Because you can't, depending on how wide your house is. This thing goes up, if you have a twelve over twelve like Cody does, if you had built a two-story house that are on snow, he's got a twelve over twelve roof pitch.
The reason I'm asking, in, in my draft,
Lighting?
Lighting ordinance, there is a restriction of twenty-five feet flagpoles. Not tall up to twenty-five.
Big way.
Right.
But this is for buildings. The two and a half stories is for buildings.
Oh, for buildings?
Yeah, so buildings may not be erected.
Okay.
So you change flags to be freestanding, so if you just leave it as flags, it's stuck to your house, right? So it's freestanding flagpoles.
It's just the flagpoles are gonna light. I mean, we can, I, I think in your thing,
So what we could.
It's gonna say lit, because you can't light it.
Okay, well, I just.
So maybe what we do is we come back.
I am concerned about mine, yes, but.
So what we need to do is.